I will reconvene the North Andover School Committee meeting on February 2nd, and we will return to regular session. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite everyone to stand up and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Just as a reminder, we're being recorded tonight, and I would ask people to silence their mobile devices. So, first order of business is public comment. If anyone in the audience who would like to give public comment at this time, this is the time to come forward. Okay. Seeing none. Our next order of business is student report. I see Courtney in the audience. Come on up, Courtney.
What's happening, Cole?
I know, Cole's like, leave us...
They had the last thing. They finished at like quarter six or something.
Yeah.
This is their last official raise, but it's going very nicely from what I've seen, so...
That's good.
Okay.
So, Drama Guild is running their school play, Grease. It's on today, Thursday.
It started seven minutes ago.
Yep. Oh, wow. Yeah, at seven. Seven...
I think this is on summer nights right about now.
Oh, yeah, totally. 7:00 PM today and tomorrow, and then 7:00 AM on Saturday.
1:30.
1:30.
Are you sure?
It's 1:30, not 7:00 AM.
I swear to God, I read 7:00 AM on the Facebook page.
No.
Okay. Because that shocked me. That's better to know it's not 1:30. Thanks, guys. Imagine if that went out. Okay. And as you guys know, Chinese New Year, well Lunar New Year was this Saturday, and Asian Culture Club had a fundraiser leading up to that, where we had a red bag fundraiser in China, Korea, and Vietnam, I think. I don't know if there's any other places. They usually give each other red bags on the holidays with money in them to wish luck and wealth to their family members and friends. And, I mean, for that fundraiser, no one in school wants to give money to their friends. I mean, we work hard enough. So, there was two pieces of candy, and I know you could write to them, like student council's candy grams. And we made $120, and that will go towards our cultural dinner night in March. And also...
You're the rooster.
Yeah, it is. You're the rooster. So, whoever's born in the year of, let me think, the year of the bunny has bad luck. So, watch out whoever's there. And, uh... And, uh, what else? Oh. The Environmental Club is running a bake sale to save the leatherback turtles. And, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Can you repeat that last part again?
Oh, sorry. "Environmental Club is running a bake sale to save the leatherback turtles."
Oh.
Yeah.
My son loves turtles. I heard turtles, and I was like, oh, okay.
All right.
I thought there might be a turtle club or something.
That's it.
Uh, okay. Any questions to Courtney? Thank you so much. Tell Cole to miss him.
All right. Thank you.
Do you want one quick, um, the Reel Life for Life?
I'm not so sure about the Reel Life for Life thing. Yeah, that's Cole's thing.
Okay. Somebody sent me something, but I think it's in another month or something like that.
Yeah, it's in March. March, I believe.
Okay. All right. I know I sponsored somebody, but, um...
Yeah, people started to ask.
Okay. Awesome.
Cole will be back by then to answer your question, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
We put the full report on Cole. Cole's missed like three sessions in a row.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know, I know.
He's got eight minutes.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Okay. The consent agenda. First order of business is approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, which was the 26th.
Sixth.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Mably, and seconded by Mr. Limpert. Any discussion?
We're trying to see the meeting remotely, although we'll not be voting on the minutes this evening.
Okay. So, since that's the case, we will take a roll call. Any further discussion? I'm sorry. Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Mably?
Yes.
Mr. Limpert votes yes. I vote yes, and Mr. Gross votes present. Okay. Thank you. All right. Quick chair report. First, I want to thank the members. I received word that everyone submitted their certificate of completion for the Confute Interest Law Online Training Program. Everyone pass? Everyone got 100?
I passed twice because I messed it up the first time. I tried to print out my certificate.
You passed the thing.
I passed it twice.
All right. So, I'm glad we all got that done by the deadline. Next thing is myself, and I think Superintendent Price have been talking a lot about the, it's called the Founda... There it is, right there. The Foundation Budget Review Commission that met last year. Legislation has been filed, which would implement the findings of that. And I think, as Superintendent Price has mentioned, you know, North Andover could realize millions for it. So, I know I sent a letter, email, to our delegation to sign onto it. The deadline for signing on is tomorrow, so I had to do that as the chair. And as, I remember, I'm the legislative representative of the group, so that's good. I got that going for me. And I will say that I know Representative DeZogla got back to me right away, and she has signed onto it. And I do plan on following with the rest of the delegation to see how they did. I also requested that they appear before, hopefully sometime in the near future. I know they all have busy schedules, but they made time for the selectmen a couple weeks ago, and I expressed my concern that I wanted them to meet with us as well, so... I know Representative DeZogla felt that she would like to do that as well, so that's good. The next thing I just want to bring up quickly is, I got an email. I think we all got the email from the superintendent of the Stevens Coolidge Estate.
Yes.
Did we get that email? They asked us to participate in a survey that they were doing about how they could utilize the Stevens Coolidge Estate more. And I said, as Chair of the School Committee, obviously, I want to see more interaction with the students. My recollection of growing up in this town and going to school in this town was, you know, between the Stevens Coolidge Estate and, you know, we had the textile museum. We had like the daily, you know, not daily, but we had a, you know, day-long field trip there. So, I don't know from your staff superintendent who would be the point person, but the superintendent just sent us an email, I think, yesterday. Did you get that email? Oh, you got that as well?
Yes. I was going to reach out to him.
Oh, okay. Great. Great, great. So, I think that's something that we should be proud of, our heritage in North Andover.
It's a beautiful place, too.
It is a beautiful place. I didn't realize how big it was. It's 91 acres. I mean, people just think it's that one building there, but it goes all the way to 125, and goes across 125 as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just quickly, when they did a, I think it was Conical or something, back in the fall, they did a thing in North Andover, and they really highlighted it. It was amazing. I'd been on the grounds, but never inside the home. So, I think it'd be pretty cool for the kids to see.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Nice story, too.
And the last thing I want to bring up, and I know the superintendent will jump in in a second. You know, last week, we, there was a parent in the audience, and she brought up some concerns about the class size reduction project that we have, that we voted on last December. And, you know, she wanted to know if it was a done deal, basically. And I said, you know, we had voted on it. The board of supervisors voted on it. It's going to go from the FinCon now, and then town meeting. But, you know, reflecting on a little bit more, you know, I know we had three meetings on this. You know, we talked about November. We had two meetings in December. We took a vote. So, I really felt we gave it a lot of due process. But you think with the timing of the holidays and stuff, and a lot of people, you know, she had mentioned that she wasn't aware of it going on. And I think, you know, seeing some of the social media buzz out there a little bit, which I'm not always a big fan of, but I think, you know, in talking to the superintendent about, we should probably do some public meetings on it. And I know you're shouldn't schedule something in the next couple months to discuss it further.
Yeah. So, two parts of that, leading into the superintendent's report.
It's a good transition. That's my last item on my chair report.
Part of it is an internal committee. So, we actually just put out an email to all of the elementary school staff and the ECC staff to say we were looking for a committee to help transition. So, we are getting teachers, kindergarten teachers, ECC teachers, specialists, special education teachers. And Judy Rogers is going to kind of co-chair that. And we're actually going to go visit a number of different kindergarten complexes. So, the ones that we have targeted are, Somerville has one, so does Dedham, and so does Middleborough. So, there happen to also be three superintendents who I know, so we can easily get access. So, we're going to go and visit. That committee will go and visit. But they just talk about a whole bunch of mostly educational issues. What does it mean to have a kindergarten? What does it mean in terms of curriculum? What does it mean in terms of transitions, both in and out? So, we've, I'm excited that we're going to have a committee of folks on the inside to really work on that. That's the inside. On the outside, I think we've talked a lot about, and I am understanding that this is going to be on town meeting. So, in April was my thinking, is having a series of public meetings where we could really bring in parents. And, you know, Gilligan and I were talking, and all of us were talking at dinner, actually. Like, should we, you know, schedule a time at Dunkin' Donuts? Should we schedule a time at Panera? So, what I'd like to do is, for our February 16th meeting, just present you an idea of like what we might do, get some feedback, and then we'll get it out there. I think that, you know, the more we're out there talking about it, the better. I think that there need to be some different meetings. You know, potential parents of kids who might be coming in are very different than people who are voting at town meeting, deciding if this is good. So, we'll differentiate those, but we'll kind of go on a PR tear in March and April, but mostly April. I don't want to do it too early before town meeting.
Right. So, the feedback, basically, has been transitions and traffic.
Yep.
And traffic is a concern. No question about it. So, we'll take the show on the road, and that, you know, we'll probably try to go down to senior center as well, and get in their news and views group, you know? Because there's a lot of people down there that are concerned about this. As Ms. Mably knows very well, there's a major renovation with the fields going on there. I know she's been attending a lot of meetings on that as well, so...
The other thing I would suggest is that the library has some programs for parents with the young.
For young children.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the morning. So, that might be another thing to ask them, when would be a good time to show up there?
Yep.
And, you know, you'd have a captive audience there.
Sure. Thank you. That's a good idea.
Yeah.
And also, I don't know about the local daycare facilities, but...
So, Judy has connections with all of those, so we'll... And then the other thing is, I'm doing, I've offered to the PTO co-presidents that I would come. I already have scheduled for Franklin and Sergeant, so I'll go to some PTO meetings, too. Good.
When is the, it doesn't impact this next incoming class, but there's always a kindergarten kind of orientation meeting in March.
March 6th.
Okay.
Yes.
So, we'll be there, too.
All right.
Yeah. Just was looking.
Ms. Greasy, about the traffic, is the town going to do something about it? Are we going to do something? Or is the town going to do something about trying to do...
We've been talking to Tom Andrew about that, and he is considering doing some kind of traffic assessment on that. He's been really good about responding to our needs, and he's been hearing this as well. So, hopefully, in the next couple weeks, we'll announce something that he's engaged in.
It'd be nice to have something to, you know, a preliminary thing.
No, I, by the time we get to town meeting, I really expect to have some kind of assessment done of what the implications are going to be.
Didn't we require or request of architects a more definitive plan by town meeting?
That is true, too, but they're not traffic engineers. You know? And I think they're also, there's a major project going on in the near future, right next to it. So, I think it's going to take someone with a larger scope than what our architects are going to do.
And I think the two, the group looking at the fields as well, they're trying to talk together through, Mr. Miller helped to hook them up, I believe.
I'm not sure Mr. Gross said anything about that.
No, no. I'm parsing that. The architects are there to give us...
You're talking about KBA?
KBA, right, right, right. My understanding was the scope of their purview was to look at options for solving those problems, be it different building configurations, even different traffic configurations. I would hate to go to town meeting without that issue well in hand of understanding...
I think that issue will be well in hand, whether or not KBA is the people who solves it.
Does it? That's...
They're definitely constituent in that process.
Yes. But they may not be able to solve it.
They're definitely in the process, but they're not the ones that they're going to oversee because there's other moving parts besides the school.
Fair.
That's what I'm saying. Okay.
Ms. Greasy, have you heard anything about the funding for the project being an issue, or is it just traffic and transitions?
I haven't heard anything with funding. Basically, we're just hearing from parents right now. Obviously, this, I'm sure people may not approve it, but, or like the idea, but, you know, traffic and transitions, I think are the two biggest things that I'm hearing from parents right now.
And I would say, when we went to the finance committee, they understood the funding and gave us no pushback.
Right. Right.
And our plan for transitions, to at least have a discussion point for that, is that the highlight of the public meetings that you're talking about?
The only reason I bring that up is that, you know, there's also, you know, this undercurrent of, you know, the political environment that we're in, and here locally in town. So, just, I don't want that, I don't want the money to become a football in that process, right?
Well, if this doesn't work out, we're just going to build a big wall over there instead.
There you go.
And Andover's going to pay for it.
Yeah, yeah.
The wall that the...
All right. I have a few more quick. Mr. Limpert, I was going to transition, or you want me not to?
No. Can I just say one thing? I think another good group to outreach to is the neighborhoods that are around there as well. If we have set up some time for that, only because of a traffic issue. You know, like Bay Street, I think it's Bay State Road or something, and there's Beacon.
Beacon.
I forget exactly, but, you know, those are going to, I think, become cut-throughs where they have... They could be.
Yeah.
Yep.
And also on media, right? It'd be nice to get better coverage than just the third-page story.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
I just want to say, that last comment, that was just in jest, right? Doing all that.
Yes. We understand.
Okay.
Mr. Limpert, you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. In the month of January...
Yes.
How many pages were, came out of our copiers? Whether they were printed or photocopied in the month of January?
I'd like to say 5,000. The number's probably 50,000.
1.2 million.
Oh, my God.
Were they double-sided?
We double-site almost everything. But you have to think about, you have to think about all of the schools, over 500 users, and the fact that we have not had a lot of curriculum resources that we have in hard copy in this district, so...
In one month?
One month.
1.5 million impressions, right?
Yep.
Tough times, Mr. Limpert, when we can't afford a consumable by the black line master. It's much more economical, but then you pay, you pay.
But the good thing I'll tell you is, because we're doing this secure printing, we're able to track this. We're able to see which machines are being used. It's very exciting. If you remember, Mike came and talked about the secure printing, and so we're just getting a baseline. So, I just thought I'd share that.
The only thing I would say is, back to where discussions we had a number of years ago now, which is the, you know, and we talked about this. We're going to have the all-electronic paperless education system, right?
Yes.
Think of the money, would say. Think of the money.
Well...
Just in paper, right?
Just in paper. So, I thought you would want to know that, too. Another, I'm going to do this every one of your last meetings.
Do we need to have like a subsection on the superintendent's report, like stump stand?
Yes. That's going to be, it's going to happen every time.
I'm very impressed, but that's unfortunately a sad fact.
I know. But, you know, it's all right. Two quick things. I just do want to let you know that the public schools are collaborating with the youth center to do a survey that's going to be sent home to parents and be done with all of our students fourth through, I believe, high school, to really talk about the use of the youth center. It's an important part of kind of the youth center thinking forward. It's a big deal for us to kind of have every kid do this. We're going to be sending something out to parents. We're working very closely with the youth center and some folks at Merrimack College who are doing it. So, we're making a huge commitment to support the youth center, which we feel is obviously the right thing to do. So, I just want to let you know that we're going to be doing that. You know, no controversial questions. We've checked that. No need to worry. But, you know, it is going to be time to kind of make that happen. And then the last thing is, ALIS has been happening. We are in the process of doing our lockdown drills, or, sorry, our enhanced lockdown drills. We had one at the high school on Tuesday. We've done them in a number of our elementary schools. We've done it at the middle school. This now means that all of the training has happened between, for the parents and also for the kids. Our Officer Caffrey did an excellent job doing the training. Our school resource officer at the elementary is making it very appropriate, age-specific. We got incredibly positive reviews on that, and now we're moving into the drill stage. And, you know, I think we're almost done with all of our schools. So, I just will say, you know, we have, we've implemented this program. It's taken a while. We did it thoughtfully. We did it not too quickly. And now we feel pretty confident that most of our schools have practiced it and are very comfortable with the ALIS approach to safety.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Well, it's great.
That's great.
Great. That's it? Thank you. All right. Moving to old business. Continued discussion in the vote to approve the FY18 budget. We had our public hearing last week. We had a few people testify on that. I know we had a lot of questions in the past from Mr. Mealy and the rest of the team here. Any further questions on the budget tonight?
Questions or comments?
Comments, everything, yeah. Questions, comments?
Actually, it's probably for either Dr. Price or Mr. Gilligan, but I really am excited about the high school, the curriculum, the five departments really getting some support from within...
Six with fine arts.
Six with fine arts. Beg your pardon. That's correct. Which brings my question, which is, we've heard from some, I think we had a student come in. We've heard from some other people about how the computer science program at the middle school has been improving, and so then the kids are coming to the high school, and we need to do some work on the curriculum we're offering there for computer science. What category, what group does that fall under?
So, you're talking about like robotics and science, technology, engineering as part of the state frameworks and the standards. You have that. I think what they're referring to is maybe additional courses, electives...
Right.
...in computer science. And, you know, that could take, you know, that could, there's various options you could have in terms of...
But we would need to probably make a decision. I have to say, where I've gone before, I think we would have to really do it under the fine arts, because that's kind of the elective component. So, that's something we, as we had, we'd have to figure out how that's best supervised.
You have to figure, because graphics typically, computer graphics typically goes on the fine arts.
Right, right.
It's a straight program.
Well, that's what I was going to ask.
Programming in a lot of schools actually goes under math.
Under math. And that's because I'm hoping that this, these new curriculum coordinator positions would help, I'm imagining, help define the revised curriculum in that area. And so, I'm wondering who would be leading the charge in that. Anywhere from, we certainly don't need intro to Google Docs in high school, hopefully, at this point. But we do need more graphic design or more computer science, more specifically, like coding and things like that, or whatever. That's not my area, as you can tell, but there's been a lot of requests about that. I'm just wondering if we're going to be able to have a chance to improve that.
I think we'll be able to report out, especially on, if you look at the five-year strategic plan, the curriculum plan, but most importantly is the review of the high school structure. But more importantly, there's also a review going on over the next period of the scheduling and all that. So, I think when we look at that, and we're mapping all, you know, the K-12 math committee, mapping those units, it's something we can certainly take a look at.
So, there's, you know, there's two answers to that. You can either kind of divide graphics into the fine and performing arts, computer programming under math, robotics and science, or we can try to take a more holistic approach. And that would probably have to then fall under one of our assistant principals.
Okay.
So, that's really the answers. But I, it's not, because it's all under the assistant principals now, there's no real answer to it now.
Right.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
We have like the graphic folks now with the arts. Robotics is with science, technology, and engineering, and then there's some tweeners, so...
But hopefully, with more leadership at various levels, we'll have a lot more chance to attack that than we've had so far.
How about business questions? What...
We have a pretty robust.
Well, what do they follow?
I'd have to check. I believe the business folk right now work, well, they're tied with the assistant principal. So, but I think there's this connection with the math department.
But it's a great question. I mean, to think about how to do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a really good question, actually, because there are going to be some tweeners. But the most important thing is...
There'll be more resources.
You know, we have content experts in the curriculum areas. So, I can't say that I could be an expert about science, or necessarily even math, but we have those people that are.
Right.
I think the observation that, you know, what we've done in the middle school to accelerate those programs is really... Potentially exposing a deficiency of where to receive those interested students. So, I concur with you, and I again ask for that.
And to the extent that programs are slightly orphaned in those departments, like having technology programs and science, where it's kind of two different things, really. Sort of pure science, like biology, chemistry, and all that, and then robotics, you know? You know, there might be some, you know, as you get to the scheduling part, some part of a reorganization that would be...
I think we're going to be thoughtful, especially as we're looking at the reorganization of the administrative structure, and where some of these pieces may make the most sense to fit in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So...
Yeah, makes sense.
I just think it's exciting.
Yeah.
That's a great point.
Especially in the content leaders.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments?
I was going to question if there's been any substantial change in our modeling or working assumptions coming up to this final vote?
No. I mean, I think the only impact was the governor's budget, and it was a little less than anticipated. And it, it was a little less than anticipated. It was a ninety-six thousand dollars in terms of chapter seventy.
Right.
About a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars overall to the town because there's a veterans. Andrew explained it to me, something having to do with veterans that actually got reduced, like the kindergarten grant example. So Andrew feels pretty confident he's putting the budget together now that we can stay within the four percent, so.
Okay.
That's all, so I, you know, it, it, no, no game changer with the governor's budget. But we also know the governor's budget is a starting point. We play this game every year, which is hard. We come up with a budget, then they actually, you know, so. But no, nothing that's really changing our assumptions.
Okay, thank you.
Is that fair, Mr. May?
That's correct. As far as, you know, locally, nothing changed.
Great.
Good question.
That's good.
So I think the only, you know, comment that I have is, you know, obviously there's a lot of time and creativity that are put into this and a lot of other resources, you know, contribute to it, whether it's the assistant superintendents and principals and all of that stuff. So I really do want to thank you and, and your leadership team for the time that they have spent in order to prepare this. I've reflected, you know, I've been here, I don't know, this is, I think, my fifth budget that I voted on and, you know, we've always kind of in the past looked at, well, not always in the past, like now, like pre-gen, right? You know, we kind of had the
The old days.
The red line, right? And so we saw what we weren't getting. And as, as good as it was, right, to understand, you know, how we had to prioritize some different things, that always kind of left us with a little bit of a negativity because we felt like we were leaving something out. And so, again, I think we've continued to be as inclusive as possible in what that process was. And I just want to thank you for whatever it was a week or two weeks ago when we talked about the reading specialist, you know, trying to, to look at that and figure out where we can be creative with that and increase the need for that. So I just want to say thank you again for your.
I mean, principals and everyone worked really hard on it. And I will tell you that, you know, when we left with the leadership team, there were some things below the red line. It's not that we didn't think about it, but ultimately I think we want to bring a budget that we're all supportive of so that it doesn't create division as we're going forward.
And, and that's a little bit of my point. I mean, I think, you know, like if, if, what, I don't want to say what matters to you, but like if you look at what's below that line and you're like, and I'm just making it up, maybe it's six gym teachers or physical education teachers, you know, at the elementary school, you're like, well, that's really important too, like, like you just kind of leave feeling that way. So, you know, I, I trust, you know, the, the process that you went through with the leaders of the district to
And the strategic
present above the line.
Being able to have the strategic plan, help us decide.
The priorities were.
Right, well, that was your, you know, your litmus test.
Right.
So.
Thank you. Mr. Lempert, no?
That's what I kind of echo Dr. Price with, what Andrew just said. Can commend you and your team for putting together a, a very good budget. Obviously, in a forty-seven million dollar budget, and you only have three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars with a new spending, you know, there's not a lot you can do. I know if we had more money, you would do a lot more. So with the, with the resources we have, I think we probably have a good budget to deliver some, some really good services for our students. So I commend you for that. Okay. Looking for a motion.
To accept the budget as presented.
Motion by Mr. Lempert.
Seconded it.
Seconded by Mr. Gross to accept the superintendent's recommended FY-18 budget as it's been presented over the last month.
It hasn't changed, right?
Yep.
Yes, yes, yes. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Your name is vote, five to nothing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hooray, hooray.
Okay.
Off to meeting. Time meeting.
Off to the finca.
Off to the finca next.
Continue with the old business. Second reading and approval of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school calendar. We tackled this a couple of weeks ago.
Can you bring that up for us? There we go.
There you go.
Yeah, just a quick reminder, there's a few kind of interesting things here. The first is that we're gonna have a full day professional development on election day, although there's not an election day, just to try to keep some consistency. That allows for the full day of elementary and middle school conferences, which I think were well received by the, the parents and also by the teachers this year. We are not, it'll be the same week, we are not choosing to take the Friday off before Veterans Day because Veterans Day is on a Saturday. We have that choice on a Saturday. There's no federal holiday because Veterans Day is on a Saturday. We have moved to the half day prior to the holiday break. That was to please the people. I was pretty transparent about that one.
The twenty-second, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, and then the rest is, is as usual, teachers coming back before Labor Day, students not starting till after Labor Day. So just to highlight the, the decision points that we made there.
Pretty consistent from this past year, except for the, the half day prior to the holiday.
Yes, that's.
What's the target end of year date?
Provided there's no snow days?
That's with five.
That's five.
So the fourteenth would be the last one, which would be great because then you could have one snow day and not feel the Friday and Monday pressure that we do this year.
Right, right.
And the, to second ask the observance for veterans is still gonna be on Saturday?
On Saturday. Everything, everything will be done here.
Right.
Right.
On the day of, good.
Right, day of will be on.
You know, the veterans feel pretty strongly about it not being like a President's Day. They want it on the eleventh.
Yeah.
And so that's why once every seven years, it's on a Saturday.
Once every seven years, it's on a Sunday.
And once every seven years, although I believe when it's on a Sunday, they do a holiday on the Monday.
I think they do it Monday.
They do, right.
So Saturday is the only time when it's not.
Okay. Any other questions about the school calendar?
Nope.
No.
Good. Except the motion.
Move to approve the school calendar as presented?
Motion made by Mr. Gross to approve the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school calendar as presented in the packet. Seconded by Ms. Mably. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Your name is vote, five oh.
I will now, Mr. Gilligan and I will now go back and do the half, the early releases. Just so you know, we, we like to get the calendar set before we do that.
Makes sense.
While we're on that subject of early releases, do we, will you reschedule the early release?
No.
No?
Okay.
That actually did come up.
Yes, with especially the students.
I'm sure it did.
I do want to remind the students, they've missed four hours for delays and I only took back one, so I'm still three hours ahead.
Okay, that's good.
I'm counting.
Next order of business is a review and discussion of the superintendent's mid-cycle review.
Yes, other than my snow day calling prowess or lack thereof. If, just I presented this to you guys, but basically, quickly, I had four goals this year that we had agreed on in October. Some of them are shared goals with you, some of them are shared goals with some of the off members of my central staff. So the first one was really about class sizes at the elementary level. I feel like we've made really impressive progress since we agreed to this in terms of the kindergarten space, the whole study, and really have a plan moving forward. So that's the first one. Instructional materials, I, I really feel that this Medicaid revolving account work has been yeoman's task. If you'll see, two years ago, we had ten point two percent of the students who are able to have consent. We're now up to ninety-one point six percent. It's a pretty incredible jump and
Yep.
it's incredible work. Laura Hardeman, Craig Gilligan, Laureen Marks, all the ETLs, that's a
That's huge.
That's a huge, huge jump. And, you know, the other component is that the town manager has been so creative and thoughtful about this. And, you know, I, I hope the town meeting will approve developing this curriculum fund. As he says, you know, that it's not much of a loss to the town, but it's a potentially huge gain for the schools. Our human resource department has completely transformed and are focused on a supervision and evaluation. Our, our leadership team has spent a lot of time thinking about difficult conversations with teachers, modeling those with one another. We actually, our last leadership team meeting, we each modeled and role-played a difficult formative assessment conferences, which are happening right now. It was really fun to watch the principals be the teacher in the role play. That was really great. And, you know, human resources this week and next, our human resources department of Kerry and Joy has been having lunches, being at lunches of all of our elementary, of all of our buildings in the district and going out and having teachers be able to come and meet them. And teachers are just so excited to know who's our, who's our human resources department. So that's been very excited. And then innovative partnerships, we've implemented Fit Money in fourth grade. And I will hopefully be announcing, I will be announcing, I will let you know, we have cemented a partnership with Lowell Five Bank to actually get kids savings accounts if they so desire and don't have one. So it's really moving forward. We'll be rolling that out in the next few weeks. Our partnership with the Stevens Memorial Library is at an all-time high. I think that's pretty, you know, having Jacqueline Woodson here was an incredible example of that partnership. Girls Who Code has started, that's a wonderful partnership where it's happening at the library. We provided the computers. One of our parents is doing it and the program is full. I mean, it's just wonderful. And then we've got some kids heading out to do their senior capstone term three. And we raised over seven thousand dollars to support kids to travel at the Lilith event, which is really exciting. And then we've also been able to bring understanding our differences with the NAIPAC to all fourth and fifth graders and some third graders in the district around really understanding different disabilities and how that impacts kids and being sensitive. So that's a quick overview. I tried to provide you a ton, and for those at home can see the, all the data that I provided, or let's be honest, that Ms. Tagari put together in a really nice way for me. So, there we go, anything that I can answer.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the members?
Just briefly.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Again, there's so much done that it's, it's, it's mind-boggling. Take the rest of the year. Yeah. So I know the board was not to sandbag for the rest of the year. However, with that said, I, I know you're gonna focus on some of the stretch goals as well. And it's amazing how much you've, you've accomplished in the short time. And also, I also want to mention how, how much I appreciate the format. This is really, it makes it so easy to go, yeah, there's no question, right? There's no question, that's exactly what we asked for, and we did get the results that, that we were counting on. So congratulations on a, in my mind, a very successful first half of the season.
You know, I, I do think that it's always the balance between, you know, charting a course that you can get done. I think that there's still some work to do, like what we just talked about, getting the K concept really done is gonna consume a huge chunk of this spring. And so, you know, some of the stuff that's still in progress is some of the harder stuff. Especially including some of the issues around human resources and evaluation, a lot of that's through IBB.
Yep.
So, you know, I think that the done stuff is often stuff you can check off. The in-progress is the harder work.
And, and to that point, your success is also based on the other members of your leadership team. So it's recognized that the, the success we're receiving is not a, a Dr. Price show, but it's really a, it's a, it's a good central office as well. So thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I even mentioned Lucy Hawkins' rollout. I mean, we rolled out an entire writing program, thanks to Mr. Gilligan and Ms. Marks and all the teachers. I mean, that's, I didn't even talk about that. So we did joke when we met as a senior leadership team, I'm like, okay, I'm writing all these things up about my progress and it's all your work.
Yeah. Sign of a good leader, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So it's, it's a lot of us.
Great, thank you.
Andrew?
I mean, I really would echo Mr. Gross's comments and, you know, I, I think one of the things that I think about this when I look at what your goals were and what you're doing, we're moving together as a, as a district and as a community because it's the right thing for us, it's the right thing for the kids. And I've heard you say time and time again, like, it's just right, it's just, it's the right thing to do. And I think when you look at this, I think you can get a lot of that buy-in and, you know, excitement from not just the leadership team, but the teachers as well, because we're not talking about, okay, we're gonna do this and, you know, it, okay, we're gonna do this. And I think the reality, as everybody knows, it's gonna get done. But I mean, like, and that's just how you work. And I remember being in Newton and, and I can't remember exactly who said it, it could have been everybody, but they just said, hold on, you know, get ready because she's gonna go. And, you know, I really feel like
And you still hire her?
We did, we did. But I mean, it, it wasn't like this one year kind of come in and, you know, start to, you know, make some small changes and start to turn the ship a little bit, you know, I really feel like we're turning and moving all at the same time. And so again, you know, at this point, you know, this is great, all the, the right trajectory. And I'm not sure how much sleep you get, but, you know.
Plenty, except on nights where there's
Right, right. All looking good.
Thank you.
Yes, I would agree with what everyone has said. This is outstanding to see and what I, I love the format, but this format ties with the budget format, ties with the, the, you know, the strategic plan. And all these are linked together and you can see that this is coming out of that, which is coming out of the next thing. So we're not, there's nothing being done superflusely or just for fun. It's being done to advance our goals.
And nothing's missing.
That's right. So I fully appreciate it and it's exciting to see. Like, oh, that is done, that's right. Thank you very much, all of you.
Kind of forget.
Mr. Lempert?
I, I guess I'm sort of interested to note that some of the stuff that I think is really significant is not one of your four initiatives on the front page, right? Technology, for example. I mean, to me, that's enormous. We've made such significant strides in technology in the model classroom and, you know, now hundreds and hundreds of Chromebooks and all of that is, is a significant change in our ability to support students and staff in the district. So I think that's really important. I also think that, you know, you, we continue to benefit from implementing or hiring new personnel in key spots. I think that's also been extremely significant. You've brought on some wonderful people, you know, that we're having the benefit of working with. So I think that's been another significant accomplishment. And then, you know, back to your comment about Lucy Hawkins, I think, you know, you, the staff has, is, is doing wonderful work in the curriculum area. So I wouldn't, you know, that, I mean, that's really, to me, it's the bottom line, right? I mean, that's why we're, all of this stuff, everything else supports that, right? So I think that's going really well. So that's what I would say. It's, I don't want you to get too swell ahead of it.
Don't worry, I have Mr. Mealy, Mr. Gilligan and Dr. Straight.
Well, I, I was gonna, I was gonna add, add that because, and you say this all the time, so, you know, this is about you and your evaluation, that's what we do. But you surround yourself with a really good team that has worked very hard with you to, to, to complete these goals. And, you know, this number just jumps off the page in me about the, the Medicaid percentage, you know, ninety-one from twelve to ninety-one percent. You know, when we debate this at a town meeting, I mean, I just remember the stories you folks told us about you going out door-to-door for that. And that's what you brought to the table, not just on that specific issue, but you dig in, you put your money where your mouth is. You went out there and you, and you did, it's, it's, that was grunt work. That was, that was grunt work. And you did it. So again, actually what the rest of the, the board have said, I'm, I'm really pleased with this evaluation and the, the format is, is great, but the really, the work they've accomplished is, is fantastic. So I thank you for that.
May I add one thing?
Sure, absolutely.
Communication and visibility, so that's what Mr. Theresa's speaking to. It's been great, it is always great, how frequently you're on the back of a scooter or in a wagon with apples or whatever. I think it's significant, I, I think it's important for the community to show that you're invested and you're willing to put in the time to make it all happen. You know, people are very impressed when you show up at the library or the historical society, wherever you are. They were impressed with your presence and you continue to be an excellent communicator in terms of newsletters and Twitter, you know, everybody's now had to get on Twitter just because of you. So just saying something.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know.
I love it, but not because of you.
You know, I think one thing that you talked about that a little bit remiss, you know, Cindy Parent, I just tweeted out and sent out the February newsletter. And I just think it's an incredibly professionally done newsletter that we send out every month. And I will tell you, that has nothing to do with me. That is completely Cindy Parent. I mean, the only thing that I do is she screams at me when the, all the articles are done except for mine. And that's really my only, and she, I just, it's so impressive how she puts that together. I don't know if you saw this one. I just thought it was a model of like pictures of all these kids, really representative of different groups, lots going on. So I think, you know, a real shout-out to her, it's really, you know, and I started with her, like, come on Cindy, what do you think of the newsletter? She's like, sure, we'll try it. And we haven't, like, we get it out, if it's not the first, it's the thirty-first.
It was the thirty-first this year.
You know, and we've done it every month. We haven't missed a day. And that's such, she's just, wouldn't you agree, Mr. Gilligan? She's amazing.
And she's amazing, she's dedicated, she's been here quite a long time and she's probably seen ten superintendents come and go. She loves the consistency of, of this letter and the news that gets out. And it's just, Dr. Price is right, it's usually, we've got all the articles in there, you only have three hundred words, so.
Well, actually, I, I was, you know, it comes with your, your little blurb in the email saying this is what you're gonna see in the newsletter. And I thought to myself, oh, they must have added two pages because you listen to all this, and then there was so much stuff reasonably discussed in that small bit of space.
And you
It's impressive.
And you guys said something to me about surrounding myself. I mean, the reality is, I've, we've hired a few folks, but mostly the people who are here and were here when I arrived, the two representatives of Mr. Gilligan and Mr. Mealy. I mean, could I have gotten better assistant superintendents? I mean, I won the lottery showing up here for these two. So I think that, and then we brought Dr. Straight on to kind of be, you know, the lottery plus. So I, I think the thing that I would say is it's not just about me surrounding myself with folks. There was a really solid core of really impressive educators here and it hasn't just been about folks coming in. It's about really maximizing the efforts and the supporting the folks who are here.
So with, with that said though, I mean, let's be realistic, you had a very good year one.
Yep.
You, you didn't stop, you continue to accelerate. And I think you're the envy of a lot of school districts to have a real go-getter, a real, a real, you know, professional with great judgment, great communication. I think we hit the lottery. So again, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you Greg, Donna and Jim as well. Okay, last item on the agenda is new business, the
So do we have to vote the
I don't, I don't know if we do.
No. It's just me updating you.
Yes, thank you. Annual review of our relationship with Cambridge Institute, Madam Superintendent.
Now, I'm gonna turn Well, I didn't know if it was new business. So when you guys voted this in, according to how you voted in and I believe Ms. Warren asked for us to review it every year. So this is our annual review. So for this one, I actually was gonna ask Mr. Gilligan and Mr. Mealy to kind of jump in a little bit on that.
All right, so Jim and I, this, you guys, as you know, we were in China in October for eleven days and we've been working with the Cambridge Institute. What we wanted to do tonight is we wanted to report out of how the two students that are exchange students today in North Andover this year at high school are doing. So Jim and I had an opportunity the other day to meet with Charlie and Adelina over at the high school. We, we met for, well, maybe over forty-five minutes or so. And they're really pleased that they came to North Andover. These are the types of students that do two years in China and they do one year in North Andover, they get a degree, a diploma from North Andover High School, they take the MCAS. So we were wondering what was working for them and what was different. So Jim, I'll let you jump in at any time, but a couple of components.
Right. Good luck in that.
I just, I want to highlight a couple of components. One of the things, for sure, are very smart young scholars that we have. One's dream is to go to Cornell and the other's dream is to go to RPI. And one of the things that was really shocking them is the language. It's been really difficult to pick up the language. Particularly, one of them spent some time in Missouri and the language in New England was much different. Just the with all of us, Jim and I. But it is funny, Jim and I in China would see folks and would say, hi, how are you? And they'd say, hi, we are fine, and you? So they had learned some language that they said it was a great background, but the immersion here in North Andover, great. The other thing that's been really terrific for them is some of the extracurricular activities. Adelina's been, she's been on the swim team, so she talks about the training. And then last but not least, although in China, the days spread out from like eight AM or seven AM to seven PM, there's a lot of breaks and different things in between. And what they were saying is we pack all the academics in so tight and then all the extracurricular activities. So in a lot of ways, it's similar, but they've had some very challenging courses. Charlie was particularly fond of the science and probably what they've struggled with the most was the English. I won't say what they said about the American food, but they, they like the school lunches, but they struggle with pizza and pasta all the time. So Courtney was kind enough to take them to Chinatown this past weekend. Or the weekend before. And they're also both members of the Asian Club, which Courtney's the president. So it, it, you know, it seems to, other than possibly putting together some, some peer social networking type things in place to support them, it was really tough to get out at first and meet people because they weren't so confident about their language. So if we had, you know, six, seven, eight students, I think it would be realistic for us to probably put some support in to connect them quicker. These folks connected, but it just took a little longer.
And neither of them actually live with a host family in North Andover.
Yeah, one's in Methuen and one's in Georgetown.
So it's, you know, as we grow and this becomes better known in North Andover, there might be families in North Andover who would like to
Now, how do they get to school?
How do they get dropped off?
Their host family, so that's part of the deal.
So, Mr. Mealy, what did I miss?
Yeah, I was gonna say more specific, more specific to the agenda item.
Well, I want to give that update.
It is good, it's good. Because what we got, the feedback we got was really helpful. As we move forward in trying to increase participation and, you know, Chinese students coming over here, it's good to know what kind of needs we, they have that we can help meet. Specific to our relationship with Cambridge Institute, though, it's been very good. They have done a lot of work in helping us partner up with a high school from Changzhou, you saw the presentation. But they've also been very good about tailoring the program to our needs and, and what we're comfortable with. And so I know there was some trepidation going in, but we haven't seen any of that. It's been an excellent relationship. And like I said, they're not pushing anything. It's what do you guys want to do and what are you comfortable with? So it's been excellent.
True professionals.
What, what would you all say the benefit, the, some of the benefits have been to us of their being here?
So a, a couple of benefits. One is with over, you know, twenty-five percent of people breathing on this earth being Chinese and the ability to bring this cultural piece for us, it's generated some interest to take a look at community programs offering an after-school Mandarin. And the other piece, the opportunity is we become, well, how do I say this in this, in these times, very carefully? As we, as we become more of a globalized society, I, I think that oftentimes we have had, through the rotary and different things, we've had exchanges with European countries. I think this is a really important opportunity for several reasons, like Charlie mentioned. So when we talked about the Chinese really trying to learn our way of teaching in terms of collaboration, teamwork, creativity, he's really excited about some of the non, some of the traditional ways he was taught in China. He just thinks it's fabulous to learn in these different ways here in America. And I also think that we can learn some things from them, particularly around their learning of language early and those interactions that they have with our students. I think it's really beneficial.
And if we partner with a school, we would do a mutual exchange so that our kids would be able to go, I mean, that's the idea. Administrators, if we do that partnership. I mean, the other reality is, if it wasn't for our partnership with Cambridge Institute, we wouldn't have the senior capstone project. That has funded a number of our innovative partnerships and ideas. partnerships and ideas.
Now, a few years ago, it seemed to me there was some interest on people's parts about having, you know, like Mandarin as another language we would be offering in the school, and that sort of seemed to fade away to some extent. Where are we at with that?
We're currently, we've been meeting with the two different levels, because every year when we look at schedules, we have to look at what's requested. So, it's one of the things we're taking into consideration is what's being requested, what language do we have. One of the pieces, Stan, I think it's been very difficult, particularly in Merrimack Valley, I think it's a lot easier, and Jen can speak to this, to find teachers who would teach part-time, that live in the city, there's more of a pool of candidates or something like that.
We still struggle to find Chinese teachers.
Yeah, so, it, my experience talking to other districts, it's much easier closer to Boston, we're lucky because Rick has contact that's willing to try it out at the school. I think it's something that evolves, that we have to continue, not just Mandarin, but we have to look at what's gonna be best for our kids and what are the, what are the requests and what are the interests as well.
You gotta start someplace, that's a good start.
Yeah, I think it's a good start with community programs, thanks.
Can I, can I ask-
You're good, go ahead. So, I think the reason why we're talking about this is because it is an annual self-perpetuating contract.
Yes.
There's concerns over, do we want to blindly renew? Couple of quick questions, and the other, the other variable here is, I think this has like a hundred-and-eighty-day breach or a hundred-and-eighty-day termination clause, which means, you know, you gotta know well in advance, you don't want to do this anymore.
Correct.
So, I guess a couple of thoughts. One, can we enter into a non, or a self-perpetuating agreement like this moving forward, as opposed to one that I thought we had a, with a three-year limit on agreements that we could enter into?
Except that there is the condition that it gets reviewed each year.
So, so we do need, we do expect to keep the annual review as part of the process?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. The other, the other question is, is there any incremental spending by the district? I know we had to get certain certifications in order to receive Visa students. Is there any ongoing cost to us outside of what we, what we've already vested to become a participant?
Not, not other than the CEVUS-
Maintaining the CEVUS cert?
There was an initial cost upfront, which we brought to the committee, if there is, Jim.
No.
We can check, but if it is, it's a nominal.
We, we did, we did review tuition, and we looked at our surrounding communities, and we feel that the twelve-thousand-dollar tuition, we should keep, we shouldn't change that.
Right, so this, this is, as we've already heard, this generates revenue for programs we don't currently have, that's good.
Correct.
And ELL.
ELL and this-
This we're reviewing this year.
This cultural enrichment, that's good, too. Has the contract terms been changed since two thousand and fifteen?
No, they haven't.
No.
Okay, so, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to continue this program. I know there was some initial concern, but I think it's, it's been coming up very, very favorable for both the students and for, for us financially, so.
Yeah, how would, what would be the steps we, we'd take to expand the program?
Well, we've already had those conversations with Payway, who's the person who's now in charge of the program, and we have said that we're gonna keep the tuition, and that our target for next year would be eight to ten students, staying in the range of the kids who are two years in China and one year here. We're not ready, the next step would be, are we, well, there's two next steps, that's about as far as we think we should, could go next year. The two potential other steps are to take kids who we would need to give EL support to. We need to have a bigger program to be able to hire the EL support.
Yeah, right, right, right.
So, our thought was maybe a year from now, we would move in that direction, which allows us a bigger pool to draw from, but we need to get the EL support within our high school first.
Yep.
And then the second way to expand is this partnership, but we're, with another school. So, that's, that's in its very early stages, not ready to roll out for next year.
But, but as we expand, the Cambridge Institute takes care of all the housing and the placement and all of that.
Yes, absolutely, and they've really said to us, as I think Jim talked about, so, you know, they said, "Okay, what do you think is possible?" And so, you know, we're two kids this year, eight to ten next year, start to build our infrastructure, maybe we move to kids who need more EL support the following year.
How could we encourage North Andover families to take these students?
That's really my question, I mean, I would really love to see these students housed in North Andover. I'm just wondering why they're out of town.
Because, go ahead.
We, because, so when we started the program, once we become more of a known entity in China, and we'll have more of an idea of what's coming, and once we know what's coming, then we'll have the, be able to work more closely with the Cambridge Institute to recruit and solicit people to stay. I would say one of the big steps, I forgot to mention, is Cambridge Institute just had a bunch of Chinese, they had Chinese teachers, but they also had people from the Shanghai office come over and do a pretty, a half-day tour of North Andover High School, and I think that's gonna be really important going back to their contacts in China. But once we start to develop the relationship with the particular school and others coming, I think we'll have a better chance to be prepared to say, "Hey, we have people coming, because Cambridge will be looking to place in the hometown."
And we did not play an active role at all in recruiting host families last year, and I would say part of that was the trepidation of, "Is this gonna work, is this not?" All of that was recruited by them. So, I would assume this spring, I'll be blasting it out in my newsletters, you know, all that kind of stuff. We, we did not take an active role in that last year, because it was like, "Let's see how this works before we start throwing our weight behind it."
Okay, I remember there being some communication, and I don't remember exactly where it came from, but whether or not, you know, families were interested, and, I mean, I heard some chatter about it.
Yep.
But then, you know, the first time I think I've heard that they're in Georgetown and Methuen is, is tonight, so.
Do host families, is it a requirement that they have students or is high school students?
I don't know, it's really handled through the Cambridge Institute, and they're compensated for it, too.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah, so.
Do we have to take a vote on this right now?
No, I, I think, I don't-
It says annual review, I don't know, it looks like it expires on February thirteenth, though.
You know what, if it was, this would be, be the first reading, so why don't I bring it back on the-
On the sixteenth.
On the sixteenth, if we do have to take a vote. Does that work? I'll ask Ms. Zegary to look at the original minutes?
Yeah, why don't you do that, that'd be great.
All right, the only thing I'm noticing is the signatory date is, expires on the thirteenth.
So, we self-renew.
Well, that's not assigned.
I would assume I'm gonna have to sign something, I haven't been given anything yet.
Okay.
I'm sure the, you know, that kind of kicks to the crows exactly on the thirteenth.
Well, it's a hundred-and-eighty-day pull-up.
Yeah, exactly, so, why don't we just, why don't we just see, and we'll take it up on the sixteenth.
I'll find out, and then I'll come back on the sixteenth, if that's what they're saying.
That's, that's fantastic. Okay, another shot of public comment. Oh, we have a contestant.
I'm Helen Picard, four-four-seven Waverly Road. I first just really want to thank everybody on this committee and the work that you guys have done, and being responsive to the public through the budget process and the other things that we were looking for when we called our superintendent to the community. This is, this is the omen's work, this is the meat of the work that you do. You did Budget Tonight, you did Policy with the Calendar, you did Superintendent Evaluation, so I know that's not easy, I know that Dr. Price and her team did a lot of that work, but I know that that was really well-informed by what you all asked as committee members and what you all brought forward from the public, who emailed you or spoke to you in, in lots of ways, and people who showed up here, so, so I just want to appreciate that. I particularly want to thank Mr. Mealy, the HR Director, for going over to the high school and speaking with them about the, the human resources changes that were in this budget. I know that the PAC really appreciated that presence. So, just, you know, really thank you for all that. I want to encourage you, and probably everybody in this room has heard me say it, I'm delighted that you've set the calendar, and I would encourage you as soon as possible to populate that calendar with the events. We've done better in recent years. Once upon a time, I believe it was Jim Marini locked everybody in a room and said, "We don't leave until all the evening calendar events are on there," so that we don't have conflicts with arts nights in one school and parent open houses in another school. I know it's hard to do that, but I know it's really important. And then, when community groups need to make their calendars for outside speakers and, and other events that need to take place, everything's on that calendar, and it's easy for them to do that. The families don't have to choose between a speaker night and an AMs family night or other things like that that can come together. So, I just really encourage you to do that. And then, finally, on, on the issue of the Cambridge Institute, I know you're gonna speak about it next week, I wonder if that contract precludes us having exchanges with other organizations. For example, I know Rotary has had students come into the district, and we've had kids go with Rotary to Europe and other places, so if you can address that next time you come together, and whether or not that precludes, in reading that contract, there was some information about any students that were interested had to be funneled through Cambridge Institute, so I just would like you to take a look at that.
So, I can answer that.
Oh, beautiful.
Yeah, what I can tell you is that we have worked sensitively with Cambridge Institute around this, and I will suffice it to say that we are continuing our partnership with Rotary and making sure that anything that has existed, has existed in partnerships that are North Andover-generated, as long as we are not competing with Cambridge, we're okay.
Great, thank you so much.
So, we had a sensitive conversation about that with them, and we obviously want to maintain the spirit of the contract, but not feel like it's, you know, we're gonna get dinged if somebody from Rotary comes, and we've had that partnership for decades.
One time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Helen Picard.
Comment from board members?
No, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
All right.
So, I really only have one question, and it's probably, could have brought it up, I guess, in the superintendent report, but is there any update in terms of principal search committee?
Mr. Mealy.
Okay.
We had our first meeting tonight of the group and provided them with all the applications that have been received so far. They're gonna spend the next ten days reviewing those. We get together on the fourteenth to decide which candidates to bring in for interviews, and then the beginning of March, we will conduct those interviews to send the top candidates on to the superintendent. We have a fifteen-member committee, it includes teachers, a coordinator, three students, three parents, myself, Mr. Lempert, and Carrie Walbar.
Okay. Great.
The application deadline is tomorrow.
I was just gonna ask, that was mine, okay.
Ms. Mayble, anything?
Yes, I actually had the pleasure of attending the Enrichment Council meeting this week. They had some questions about the kindergarten building changes and how that might impact how they do their programming, because a lot of the programs are K-2 right now and things like that. They get a certain amount of money per student, and we explored some ideas. And it also, I also actually hosted the electromagnet, electromagnetism show at Thompson this morning, which was very fun. That young man Brendan from the Museum of Science was spectacular, and the kids were great. One of the teachers, Ms. Gilmartin, had to have her hair stand on end for a very long time. She was fantastic, it was, it was really great.
Did you get a picture of that, Ms. Mayble?
I have many pictures, actually.
If you could send me one, Twitter would light up with that one.
I will send that to you. But also, I would, would like to see if we can invite them to come, they'd be interested in coming to, to speak with us, to make sure everybody here and even people who watch know what the Enrichment Council does and what their charter is. And-
That's great.
So, I told them, you know, af, probably more into like March or April would be best, and so, if, I'll work with Mr. Tracy, but if nobody objects, I think it'd be wonderful if they could come here and tell us what they do.
Yeah, that's a great, we'll schedule that for sure. Mr. Lempert?
Well, you all missed a wonderful robotics tournament.
I did not miss it, I did not miss it.
Mr. Tracy was there, he and his family showed up, and I hope they enjoyed themselves.
We had no idea what was going on, or could we score, but Jack, Jack wasn't there.
We had-
I told you, you'd love it.
We had fifty-six teams show up, and we had, we handed out awards at the end to teams from three different states, which we've never done before, it was just spectacular. And it's, it's just a wonderful event at our high school, we had good attendance, a lot of support, a lot of volunteers show up, a lot of parents, a lot of students, we have all kinds of great people doing that. And I, I, I love the whole idea of robotics.